One.
Good evening, six thirty P M, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. I call the Select Board Special Meeting to Order. The Advisory Committee Chair would call their meeting to order, please.
Yes, on behalf of the Advisory Committee, I would like to call this meeting to order for advisory.
Thank you. If you are able, please stand for the pledge.
I declare the meeting to abide from the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast live on T C T V, Kada Station Eight, and on their YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on T C T V YouTube channel. Anyone on advisory by chance are recording the meeting?
No.
No.
Thank you. So we're having this special meeting to create and appoint to appoint members to Town Administrator Screening Committee. And once we do that, we'll discuss, put out an outline of some of the criteria in including how it will work, getting the meeting scheduled started, the open meeting law, going to executive sessions, the confidentiality involved. The Screening Committee can discuss it in executive session under the Open Meeting Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Eight. If the Select Board were to do it, we would have to do it in an open meeting. And there may be applicants who have a job and perhaps aren't ready to toss it out there that, hey, I'm looking. But a screening committee can do that. You are covered under the Open Meeting Law, so you have to post your meetings. You would have to begin an open session. And then there is the executive exclusion for item eight that allows Screening Committee to meet in executive session. You have to keep minutes and so on and so forth. I will ensure that the committee has a copy of the Open Meeting Law. I will have a motion, the executive session, for you to use. It would be the same one until you come to, till the committee comes to a conclusion and gives recommendations to the board. And once you send them to us, the executive session meeting is over until the board chooses someone. If they do, then we negotiate the terms of employment with the individual. So at our last meeting, the Select Board, the Board voted to have Ms. Bassel contact people. We were looking for a resident, two department heads, a member of the Advisory Committee, which is why the Advisory Committee is here with us, and a member of the School Committee voted by Donald Templeton as a Templeton resident. We have not gotten any response from the School Committee as of yet. So at this time, I would ask the Advisory Committee to discuss and vote a member from the Advisory Committee to serve on the Screening Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. At this time, I would like to now the Advisory Committee being in session, I would like to open up the nomination for the Advisory Committee member to the Town Administrator Search Committee. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would be pleased to nominate April Cover to the position of the Advisory Board.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I think she will do a very good job. She's an intelligent woman. She's lived in town long enough, so she knows what we need for an administrator.
Any further discussion?
No.
Jaclyn?
No, none at this time.
This time I will bring it to a vote. It has to be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jaclyn?
Yes.
And I also vote yes via five to nothing vote in favor of April.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I also, Mr. Chair, you know, I did place on the advisory portion of the docket, you know, space to recommend a Templeton resident candidate if you feel that's necessary. If you do not feel that is necessary at this time.
No, we have, as I said before, it had Ms. Bassel contact and put out things for residents, and we have some resident responses, so we will discuss those and hold on on one perhaps. So you wish you can.
If if all the members assent, I will withdraw that that agenda item from discussion tonight.
So the Advisory Committee can adjourn it.
Okay, does any member wish to offer comments?
No.
No.
Jaclyn, you wish to offer?
None at this time. Thank you.
I don't have any comments. And I also will stay silent. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Move second. Any discussion?
No.
Hey, we'll now call the roll. Jaclyn?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Yes.
April, yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for including us.
And thank you, Ms. Cole, for stepping up. You're all welcome to stay if you wish.
Yes.
So, Ms. Bassel, what is good news?
So we have four people that volunteered to serve on it. There is Mr. Black, Matt Black. Derek, you can read this.
Yes. Go ahead.
So the owner of the Otter River Hotel, AKA the Red Onion, multi-property owner in town, is also a twenty-plus-year business insurance executive working with U.S. and global companies since two thousand and five. As I understand, consult companies around the world on compliance, business operations, and technology. Honestly, my ownership in the pub is really by default, as my role was to be an investor and property owner to help turn it around. But sadly, Mr. Basil passed away during my acquisition. With all I have dealt with and growing up in this town and many others as property investors, I'm more than anyone know Templeton. I feel strongly our town needs someone not only qualified, but special to lead us into a positive future, one that requires vision, process, and a desire to see our town succeed. Happy to provide my professional resume as well as references if I can assist in any way during the process going forward. Then we have Nicole Roberts. Hello, I'm interested in sitting in the Town Administration Administrator, sorry, Town Administrator Selection Committee. I've been a resident of Templeton for twenty-six years, an employee with the Town of Winchton as the land use and planning coordinator for the last eight years. I sit on the Templeton Housing Authority and the Winchton Housing Authority as support staff with the Town of Winchton. I'm president of I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this right. Ah, Hesma?
Ah, Hesma.
Ah, Hesma.
Ah, Hesma.
Hey, thank you. President of Ahesma Haven Animal Rescue for the last fourteen years. I was involved with, in the Town Manager Search Committee for the Town of Winchton two years ago, which I was honored to be part of and thoroughly enjoyed. I feel my years of municipal experience will be an asset to your search. Thank you for your considerations. Sincerely, Nicole Roberts. We have Jackie Prime is the Director of Community Services in town. And we have John Graves, who is the Town Moderator.
Right, as I emailed you when you said you were going to hearing that from any department heads, I reached out to a couple and Jackie Prime volunteered, and the Police Chief, Michael Bennett, volunteered. He explained that he has served on multiple screening committees for different positions, and he was hoping some other department heads would step up. I said, well, that's not the case, so he said he would serve. So we have two department heads.
Mr. Chair, um, under the circumstances with the School Board Committee, I would like to make a motion to change that out to a resident.
For the rest of the board, we did stipulate the School Committee member would be one of the members, resident of Templeton by the town. I know Lisa you reached out to the School Committee several times. I reached out to Silvani several times. She emailed back today, a couple hours ago. She hadn't heard back from anyone. She asked the possibility of waiting till their School Committee meeting on the fourteenth. There's several days open next week that the committee could meet to initially organize. They will need a chair and a clerk to keep the minutes because most of your work, their work will be done in executive session to keep the confidentiality of the people that have applied. We have eleven candidates as of tonight. As their emails have come in, I'm interested in this. I respond, thank you for your interest in Templeton. Your information will be kept aside and presented for the Screening Committee when it's formed. Other than that, I haven't really looked at their stuff. And I would, the first meeting of the committee, I took and I printed out all of the information. A cover letter with their resumes and their references, and I put it in individual manila folders because I'm an old-school guy like paperstone. When the committee initially meets, creates officers, I will hand that off to the committee along with a copy of the Open Meeting Law, a motion to help the committee out, because I don't know how many people have been in meetings in committees and have done the executive session. I haven't done a specific one.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say, because of the late date of the school and because no one came back, I did run into a school committee member this afternoon. And they thought it was odd that we wanted, since we do negotiations with the school and contracts for them to hire our person. But they, it doesn't seem like they even I mean, they said they reached out to them, but this person on the School Committee didn't seem to know.
Yeah, they, again.
I would like to see it be another, since we have residents, to have another resident and to do a motion to change that School Committee member to another at-large resident.
Yeah, because we did specify a School Committee member, resident of Templeton versus a School Committee member. So we have Advisory Committee member, we have two department heads, and we have several residents. So yes, well.
I, if, I don't know, Candace, was that a motion that you were making?
Yeah, I made a motion to flip that out from a School Committee to another at-large position.
I would second that.
Yeah, we have a motion to appoint two residents at large to the Screening Committee, made by Ms. Graves, seconded by Mr. May. Any discussion on that? Hearing none on the motion. How'd you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that is at six forty-five.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Black and Ms. Roberts to the Screening Committee as at-large members.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. On the motion, Mr. May, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And yes. It's four yes.
We have a Screening Committee.
Yeah.
Six forty-six.
Did we get any other information from Tim? Did you want to just?
We did not.
Did you want to just, Mr. Chair, did you want to just, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with Tim sending it to you and you overlooking it, because I feel like you guys could figure out the criterias pretty quick. I don't want to hold up this board. If that would be possible.
We have, we have a Screening Committee. We have all their email addresses. If it's all right with the Board, I would email the members if you can send me the Citizen at Large
Yes.
emails. And just outline the confidentiality of the task at hand. You have to follow the Open Meeting Law regarding agendas, posting, meeting, and all of that stuff. The executive session, the section, the explanation, I would give them an explanation. Again, at first meeting, I would show up with all the information. And once they have a chair and a clerk, here you go. I'll see you all later. It will give them a printed-out job description that the Board voted on, and it is on the website. A copy of the personnel policy. I will give them a copy of the Open Meeting Law.
Mr. Chair? And you?
I would explain that if, where they choose to meet, you have to be in a place where people aren't going to walk in and they'll secure the doors. So if you meet here, I'll be glad to open up the building, if you meet after hours. You could, the committee can lock the building up because you don't need a key to do that. Or we can work for something else. You would, and the committee would simply be charged with, again, according to the executive session, once the Screening Committee can meet, they have all their cover letters, resumes, all their contact information, including email. So if the committee wants to, they can initially go through all the the resumes, and if they choose, they can pick if they would like this one, and you can ask them to come in for interviews. And once that committee sends the recommendation to the Select Board, whether it's three candidates, four candidates, two or none, it can be, the process can start over. But once you send them to us, the only thing that can be done in executive session after that is negotiation of an employment contract. You send us three names, we have to then interview them in open session. That's why it's a Screening Committee, because if the Board sided with the eleven, it'd all be done in open, and again, it's, it may be somebody who hasn't said, hey, I'm thinking of moving on yet.
Mr. Chair, did you mention the fact that they have to be sworn in, and the message has to be sent to the clerk to tell them they have to be sworn in?
They, this, we'll send all these requirements to them.
And that she'll post on my town government, so maybe they could, once they form and know when their availability to have a meeting, then maybe our staff could post it for them.
I have, I've looked at the calendar, and I've seen some open dates for next week as well as the week after. Again, I will email the committee and what's your preferred date, and if we say Monday and Tuesday, Tuesday, well, we'll go with the ones, the most preferred date, and get the first one posted. And then I would act as like a chair for them, tell, as soon as you get a chair, then I hand the stuff on to you. They will have, I'd be willing to stay at the thing in case they have any questions coming up about a procedural thing, but once the committee is all set, settled, they would be in charge of hosting their meetings and doing an agenda, and that would be the responsibility of the chair. Your clerk, you're going to be meeting in executive session, so they will have to take minutes. I have a minutes checklist. I have an agenda checklist. And I have a booklet on the Open Meeting Law that I will give to the committee, so they will have it for reference. You won't have to depend on, I mean, you can do electronic stuff there if you want, but again, I'm old-fashioned, so I'm going to hand off all the paper stuff to you, so you have it. You can pass it around.
As far as posting it and stuff, the clerk will reach out to you.
Clerk.
Clerk.
The clerk for the thing will be charged for taking the minutes, and you must take good minutes.
If you.
Again, I have the, I have the procedures printed out, the thing, and I even did a motion for the executive session, and you'll be doing the same thing every time, so the motion is, it cites the law and it covers you. Again, I'm not sure how many people on this committee would have had, you know, been on another board committee, had experience doing it. It's not that hard. It's just the initial one.
You can also get a key from the clerk.
So.
Yeah, so then he doesn't have to open. You can check one out. The chair can check one out.
You'll, yes, you'll have to. April, you're already covered.
So will I need to be sworn in again?
No, well, you have to be sworn in for the committee, but you won't have to do this stuff.
Yeah, the open meaning stuff.
You won't have to, because you've already done that.
But then new members?
I will send that, I will send this out to Lisa, who informed me, the Citizen at Large. I also have I have some questions that, to ask, a couple, two groups of questions. You're not bound by them. I'm just going to offer to the committee, you can look at them, say, we'll take some of them. You can say, throw it in the chat, do whatever you want. Just suggestions from a former town manager that I know that went through this, and I've watched other towns that have just gone through the process, the committee, and I've watched their meetings and their questioning, and I just, I spent time gathering that stuff up. So again, it'll just be a suggestion, like I said, these are samples, you can look at them, use them, fill them in a round file, it's up to whatever the committee wants to do with them. I'm just going to offer that as and Mr. Toth is working on the charging guidelines, but he couldn't be here, and he didn't get them, he didn't get them to me, but if he has something, you know, I'll get that to you too as well. But it's again, your committee is to, it's a Screening Committee to look at all the candidates that are interested in being town administrators. And it's up to you to look at it and say, you know, they look good. And we don't have anybody here, we don't think. I mean, the committee can do that.
Because you're an open
So.
session, excuse me, Mr. Chair, they won't be allowed to discuss with the public what they read.
So that is pretty much it. So we have the committee. Lisa will send you emails, and I will send them out probably tonight, or definitely first thing in the morning.
In doing so, can you put a date and what you expect us to?
I am going to ask, you know, what's your preferred place? In a meeting place, but again, I, I think this is good, because you can close the doors, put aside, the sign is already here.
Well, Mr. Chair?
If you pick dates that are open, you're, you can come here. There are still other places to use, but getting access to the building after hours would be, yeah, sure.
With that being said, I can, I'm staying home, so I'm home all the time. I live two minutes down the road, so I could be here to open the building up.
If, yeah, in case, well, that'd be good to have a backup in case I can't, I'm busy or something, you could just, again, they just need to be let in the building.
Well, once they have their meeting, they contact our office to actually make sure the room is available, whoever the chair is. And then whoever the chair is will have to contact the candidates to line up the interview dates, to come in and do the interview dates for them to come in. But yeah, the first meeting is like a setup, and then the next meeting is to bring in the candidates, probably. Yeah, it's all online. You can Google most of that stuff. There are a lot of questions for town administrators are online, too. These meetings, you can watch.
Not necessarily do, I mean, a meeting.
Yeah, you can do that with your board. You can present, you can look through all the, you could do one meeting, which is looking at resumes. They do a lot of different stuff. I recommend, because there's a lot of different towns in the state. You can, you know, being on it, you can learn a lot of, you know, get some ideas.
Just, I'll try to cut down on the committee's initial work, so you can get to because again, you may find your first meet the first time. You could have more than eleven candidates. Again, I will have all the stuff for you. I will get the email addresses, send everything to everybody. I'll offer you, I've looked at the calendar when this, when this room is open next week and the week after. It may not be able to be consistent, like a consistent Monday. It may hit me one week, it may be a Monday if you want to meet the next week, it may be. And again, the initial look through the resumes and stuff, then you can contact the candidates that you may want to interview with person. You know, they might need to leave way in time, so maybe.
My town government's a good place, too. You can see where all the meetings are for all the other boards when they, when here. That's a good way to look, too. That's what I usually used to do, just looking, seeing who's doing what.
The town website and meeting count.
Yeah.
I'll get all that information out to all of the members. Just, I try to save some, some of the work and some check. Insist you on getting started. So again, thank you for the Advisory Committee being here today. Back to April for well, I don't know if you were sure, wanted to be here.
You're in.
and for the, for the department heads and the residents that sent in interest forms, I thank them. It is, it's time-consuming, and I, I realize that it's summer and this is real, really quick. But sometimes that's the way it rolls.
I'm excited.
So I, I, I think we have a, a, I think there's a good committee with a good broad experience and
Yeah.
Look, a looksee from the view of the people, and again, I will ensure you get all of the stuff as much as you can get, and once you have, once you have a chair, one thing will be, let's end the building and move on.
Do I have anything else?
So, thank you very much. And that is
That's it.
All we have for this meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
First, I would like to say thank you to all the people who volunteered and put their names forward, really appreciate it, and I'm really glad that we have candidates and a committee to review them as quick as we did. I'm impressed, and thank you, Jeff, and the rest of the team for pushing us forward. Really appreciate it.
This is what the taxpayers hire us for.
And I'll second that motion on the adjournment.
Very exciting.
All right, on the motion to adjourn, seconded. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
Can I be pulled?
We are adjourned.